We'll start a meeting with the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Laura.
Frank Claypool.
Here.
Henry Sayers.
Here.
Sarah Farley.
Here.
Pam Storm.
Here.
Laura Carter-Musson.
Here.
Steve Oakes.
Here.
And we have approval on minutes, well, we have our table minutes of the 27th here as well, so if you want to review the November 10th one first.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the November 10th one.
I'll second that.
I had just a tiny comment there. Well, I have two tiny comments, so on page three about the middle of the first paragraph, it says "know who mayor the mayor," so you just need to strike the first mayor. I'll hand you this, so you can.
Know who the mayor. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, because I checked it a couple times and I couldn't get it to sound right. I still did.
The Knight Foundation.
Yeah, and then on page six, the word, in section A, the last paragraph, the word "foundation" which appears in the first line and the second line should be "fountain."
Yes.
And where we say, "new paving was put down," I did note in the reading that, and that was entirely donated.
The paving?
Mm-hmm. Everything was donated.
I have a few things. Let's see here, from page three, section, Roman numeral two, from municipal order. I just wanted to include that Chief Stanley's last name is spelled just a tiny bit, a little transposition there. And sort of a bigger thing on page four, the very end of that first paragraph, it states, "Mr. Elkins stated that the committee reviews this data monthly," and he had already exited the meeting, so he could not have stated that. I'd like to strike that line.
Hmm, I thought you need to say that at one point. Okay. Anything else?
Yeah. Oh, I haven't checked.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Let me make sure. There might be one more thing. Oh, which is a tiny thing. You go ahead.
Oh, on page two, in the second paragraph, "we are in litigation," not "we are litigation." Just missed the "in." One, two, three, four, fifth line down. And then also the last paragraph, starting with Mr. Anthony Breeze. I think we had discussed talking about those, that striping at the end of Amsterdam, about talking to the engineer about that, our senior engineer.
Yeah.
Yes. Did we not?
Yes.
So you want me to take you to that?
Yes.
That was like the next step we were going to.
I did not listen to the recording, but I'm pretty sure we talked about, because I think I reiterated, we said yes, we'd do that. And then there's one more thing, too. On page three, section three, A, I guess I should say Chief Stanley's report, missing an "s."
And the last little tiny thing I had is very similar to that, just on page seven, in the very last line for the motion to enter executive session, it says "made by Cardosi." I'd like to add Ms. Cardosi.
Mr. Claypool.
Yes.
Ms. Sayers.
Yes.
Ms. Farley.
Yes.
For Ms. Cardosi.
Yes.
Mr. Elkins.
I think I abstained, I wasn't here for the whole thing.
Okay.
Would you like a motion on the October 27th?
Yeah, motion on the 27th.
I'll make a motion to.
I was looking for the date there.
About the October 27th minute.
I'll second.
Okay, I do have a couple changes on this. Number one, in the first line there, Julie, in the all-caps section, the word "meeting" has an "i" in it that is transposed. We left this at our last meeting, I asked to include a conversation or discussion between myself and Ms. Cardosi, and there was some debate about that. So I listened to the meeting four times, and I wrote up a summary of that, and I'll pass it around to everybody. I would like to include this, if possible, on page two, where it's the third paragraph from the end, where I said Ms. Fore made a motion to adopt Resolution Six. I would like to include it at the end of that paragraph. It's a pretty simple summary of what was discussed. The entire discussion lasted on the 13 minutes and 17 seconds mark. You can pass these around if you want. But, you know what, I better hang on one myself. So, you know, I didn't want to just do a word for word, obviously that would be a reason, but this is a summary of what we discussed.
Your co-president, you put it where?
I'm thinking right here, Laura, on page two, in this paragraph here, where the motion was made to adopt Resolution Six. This discussion was a part of that motion, so, you know, to clarify.
Is it where everyone received the document?
Enter, it says Ms. Fore.
Yeah, it can go right after that, yeah. Uh-huh, it can go right after that. So I can read this out loud. Relevant to the discussion of Resolution Six, Ms. Fore proceeded to publicly discuss and clarify the exceptions memo consisting of seven items. Ms. Fore posed to Ms. Cardosi each of the seven exceptions to determine which she intended to exclude from advancement to the Z-21. Ms. Fore passed a copy of the exceptions to the audience. It was confirmed that all items relating to the RM zone, and those were specifically items four, one, four, and seven, were removed from advancement, and that the environmental matters, items two, three, five, and six, remained and would be advanced to the Z-21. Ms. Fore noted that it was important to publicly review the exceptions to eliminate concerns about transparency and certify what would remain in and what would be excluded from the Z-21.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Kathy. Kathy, I'm sorry.
Sarah.
I just have a question about this. I think, I think this feels accurate to me in terms of what our intentions were in general with Z-21. However, I do think that this was not included, like, none of this information was actually included in writing in any of our resolutions. So it's a little bit, I mean, I think it's fine to include it in the minutes, but I don't really think it, I don't think it was handled the way it should have been in the meeting.
Right, we're just discussing the minutes right now.
I understand.
Right, so this just pertains to the minutes, and this is what transpired.
Can I say one more thing? I just want to add that I also went back and watched the video, the recording, and it seemed to me that we, basically, the conversation happened at the end, this is going to be so specific, at the end of that next paragraph that ends with the RM zone, which Ms. Cardosi asked to remove, and the conversation went something like this, you know, what are we doing with number two, hillside development, number three, tree removal, and then, you know, I think it was asked of you, Laura, like, if you wanted to remove one, four, and seven, and you agreed to that, but I think the confusion, at least, if I was reading all of this and trying to understand it, you know, not being on council, I think it would feel confusing because, you know, it's like, what are we even talking about? What is this memo? How is it relevant? Because it was never recorded in the resolution. So I just think it's, you know, again, I'm not, I really don't even think it's like my argument to have, but I just think it's unclear.
Again, I think we're just trying to settle on the minutes that we tabled, and what was said at that meeting.
That's wonderful.
That's fine.
I had a few other items that I had asked for changes during that meeting that were not included in the update. One was on page two, before that paragraph, where that states, this is like, this is one, two, three paragraphs from the bottom, where it says that Ms. Fore made a motion. I'd ask to add that Ms. Frelick asked if we needed to, a motion to have a discussion.
Is it there?
Is it there?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm looking at the other one.
Oh, no. There you go.
Okay, it's in the paragraph. Okay. So maybe the other things were added. Let me just double-check this. Since I can't receive this, I'm late. Yes, okay, very good. Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're good with Ms. Fore's changes to take a vote?
Okay.
Mr. Claypool.
Yes.
Ms. Sayers.
Yes.
Ms. Farley.
Yes.
Ms. Cardosi.
Yes.
Mr. Elkins.
Yes.
Laura, here's the copy. It's, uh, it's not yet. Please, uh.
Before we get started on our business, I'd like to just mention that Kenton County, we got a letter from Kenton County Schools about the condition of our roads, and that Public Works did a great job in roads, and this past snow that allowed the buses to get everywhere they needed, and they didn't have any problems at all, and they wanted to thank them publicly. So I'd like to go.
Claypool, man, yes.
Absolutely.
And I think he came around later and flung us off.
Danny's the main guy, that's for sure. Well, thank you.
I'd like to remind everyone about Luminary Night on the 14th also, carriage rides that same day. Our visit to the Behringer Crawford Museum is our free day on the 14th as well. And then I'd like to thank those who worked in the park and set up the park, usually Pam and Missy, and there's a few others that show, they come and get the park ready for the carriage rides. And a little update from the bridge corridor, where finally, utilities have been, being worked on, transmission lines are being relocated and gas, electric moved for construction, the right-of-way acquisition and other utility relocation is going on as well. And in 26, there'll be more construction that starts that you will not notice, but is first under the pilasters for the, in the river. So that's, you won't really see it, but it's going to be going on on both sides of the river. There is massive number of hours that work and prep have gone into this. This is just the Kentucky side info, and there is equal amount going on on the Ohio side at the same time. They're taking down half the building at the Longworth Hall and going to be replacing some with a like building. So all that's going on, and that was finally, Stacy had an update for us right now, so I said I need one before the meeting. As for our investments, year-to-date, we've made $78,500, and $10,500 has accrued that will pay out when the investment, this other part of the investment matures. They're in different sections, so they come due at different times, and then you get the accrued amount. So let's start off 26 and move forward. So we have on the agenda, a first reading for, it's just the first reading for ordinance nine, approval for the recommendations to adopt through the Z-21.
In ordinance of the city council, the city of Park Hills, Kentucky, accepting and approving the recalcation of the Kenton County Planning Commission, adopting a new official zoning code and zoning map in the city in accordance therewith, repealing recurrent and existing officials from the county cities and the local.
And then Mr. Denbo is here, if you have any questions. I know you all had it in your emails, and I think Sarah, Laura had a package delivered, so any questions on?
I do have a question, and Mr. Denbo got here really early, which was nice, so I had a chance to let him know what I was going to ask, but there was a new state law passed pertaining to manufactured housing, and that law is very strictly written, so that if you don't incorporate this into your zoning code, your zoning code is declared invalid by the state. So could you describe, Patrick, how that impacts us? Because I know the PDS has already written the necessary legislation that will be folded into our Z-21, but I want everybody to understand that we must now accept manufactured housing in any residential zone. I just, it's a state law, and I, you know, it's yours to explain.
Sure, so, thank you very much, and I'm Patrick Denbo, I'm senior planner with PDS staff. House Bill 160 is what's being referred to, and it's for qualified manufactured homes. These are not manufactured homes, they're not mobile homes, to be clear. Qualified manufactured homes have specific standards regarding, they must be permanently affixed to a foundation, for example, but what this new state law states is that essentially wherever single-family homes are allowed, so whatever zoning district, single-family homes are allowed in, a qualified manufactured home must also be allowed, and they must not be treated any differently than any other single-family home. So, for example, if a community has architectural standards, they can have those for the qualified manufactured homes as well, but it has to be the same for all other single-family homes, so you couldn't place architectural standards, for instance, above and beyond what's already applied to single-family homes for a qualified manufactured home. So the state law will go into effect on July 1st, so that's why we kind of tried to get out in front of it. Planning Commission sponsored a text amendment to, for all the jurisdictions in Kenton County to get the ordinances updated to reflect those changes in state law. For Park Hills, I believe there were two attachments, one for the existing ordinance, one for Z-21.
Correct.
Just depending on timing and how that works out with the.
So, Patrick, I read the House Bill 160, and the description of qualified manufactured home, but quite honestly, I came away with little understanding of what that meant. There's no, could you inform us a little more on what exactly that is? Are these like Clayton homes, for example? Would that be qualified manufactured home?
Well, so I might leave something off, so just bear with me, because I didn't have this one right at my fingertips, but essentially, a qualified manufactured home currently is built after a particular date. What the new law is doing is removing that date and just stating that it has to be installed within five years of being manufactured. So these are essentially homes that are built off-site or, and then brought in sections to a job site, for instance, and assembled. Again, they have to be on permanent foundations, they have to be properly connected to utilities, but I may forget something, but that's essentially the gist of it.
And there's no exception for like a historic zone or anything like that?
No, it would be, they would be subject to any historic standards if there were historic guidelines, you know, if this was going in a historic preservation zoning district, for instance, because those apply to all other single-family structures, but you couldn't do anything above and beyond that.
Stick-built, too. They're basically stick-built?
Essentially, yeah. I mean, essentially, they are stick-built homes off-site, brought in in sections and assembled on the property.
Okay. This really helped clarify a couple things for me, because I had some questions about the terminology, but, you know, just noting that in our permit, in the table that we have in our, all of our codes, and especially in Z-21, you know, it's showing, just basically taking that line out, because now it's part of everything.
Correct. So what the, what we are doing as far as the text amendment is actually adding qualified manufactured home to the definition of single-family home, just so there's no, since state law was so specific on that, and removing qualified manufactured home as its own use, so it'll be wrapped into that definition of single-family.
And then the?
Detached, single-family detached.
Right, and then we have this nice page of the details also. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have another, I have a question about a different item, if anybody?
Well, I have a question on manufactured. I don't know, in the lending business, they would come with a certificate, and then they have to have a deed transfer and things like that, once they're affixed to the property. So is that still, do they come with a certificate?
That much? I don't know. I do, I do know they have to be permanently affixed to the foundation, and that would go through, you know, building code, it would be per the definition within the building code for building permits, but.
Do they have like a required minimum useful life?
I don't believe that's something that's part of the, of the law.
I don't see that.
Because, again, for financing, there's always the appraiser that says, oh, it's a 30- or 40-year life, or 10. So that's, that's an issue. And the reason I asked about certificates is because if you bought the land, and then this comes later, the value of the land is there, and so is this like new construction, or does it come with a certificate that has to be transferred to the deed?
And that's a question I'm not going to be able to answer, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it sounds like a.
I didn't find that in House Bill or any of the information either, so.
All right, my other question is also for council to think about, which is the 21-day clause. That is, let me get the right page. I think it's page 171. I don't, maybe not everybody has the packet, but mine is very old. But this is referring to the sort of automatic passage, I'm going to, I'm not going to do this justice, but basically, the 21 days after a map amendment request has been recommended by KCPC, if we do not appeal that, given what, how things stand currently, it would automatically be approved or follow what the recommendation was from KCPC. And I bring this up because I didn't, I missed this in all of our six years of study, and learned about it at the KCPC meeting in November, and, you know, it just kind of, you know, was a little flag to me to look into it, and I did, I talked to Andy Vodekovich about it, I also emailed a couple of city administrators in Fort Wright and also in Independence. I didn't hear back from the city administrator in Independence, but I asked them specifically, per Andy's suggestion, because Fort Wright has had a good experience with it, and Independence has gone from having the 21-day clause to not having that. So I suggest, based on what I've learned, and I can share more details, but I think we should not have the 21-day clause in ours, because I think we need to have a little more time available to us in case we need to make other changes, or just need to make sure we're in agreement.
Is the 21-day, I read that, is it in, on your side, KCPC's side, or on?
So what it is, is it's for map amendments, and Kentucky rights statutes already have an allowance for this, it's called the alternative map amendment process, and a city can adopt it, or they don't have to adopt it. But what the 21, you were right on, I mean, the 21-day rule, it's when Planning Commission makes a recommendation on a map amendment at a public hearing, that recommendation, whatever it is, would become final after 21 days unless somebody files a request form, sometimes called an appeal form, but it's a request form to, requesting that city council take final action, and that can come from anybody, and it takes one. So one person, entity, an aggrieved party, or the legislative body can submit that within the 21 days, and then it goes into the, in quotes, "normal" map amendment process with city council, which is that 90-day period.
When, in my correspondence with Jill Bailey in Fort Wright, you know, she said it works very well for them, and I think they have perhaps, you know, a different sort of set of circumstances than we do, because, in fact, they have a city administrator, and they have a law enforcement to help prepare information for their council, and I also think they, they perhaps have, you know, a potential for greater agreement a lot of the time, and I think that that helps them a lot, too. So I, you know, I think that we want to, I would like to see us, if we don't make it what it has been in the past, I think we should look at a longer time period, because I just don't think 21 days is long enough. I think it might, you know, requires to have a special meeting or something like that, when it might be better to have 30 days, or 45 days, or a complete, you know, the complete 90 days.
And just to be clear on that, too, I don't believe state law, it's, I don't believe it's set up to allow any, like, 30 days or something like that. It's either the 21 or the 90.
Got it, okay.
Pam, did you, oh, Patrick, that answered better.
You said it much better.
And I do have the, you know, I have my email with Andy that I can share with you, Mayor, if that's helpful, I can forward it to you or just pass it over to you, so you can see, like, what the suggested language update would look like, and he said that that would be up to our city attorney.
We got it from, no.
For the 90-day?
No, but, excuse me, I mean, for the ordinance, for the Z-21. Is that what?
No, I mean, if we were to change it from the 21-day portion.
Oh, okay.
This would be changing it back to the 90-day. So he has, Andy shared the language that we would need to do that.
Well, probably, I guess you guys can share it with myself and Mr. Vaughn.
Absolutely.
Okay. I don't know if anybody wants to talk about that more.
I don't think that's reasonable. I mean, I think, you know, anything that's automatic scares me a little bit. And 90 days, I mean, it's like I didn't have a council meeting to discuss it, the 21 days, that's just three weeks.
Exactly. Exactly.
Patrick, I've got a question. I know typically, cities have to adopt the alternate procedure, and Park Hills did not do so, so go back to the statutory 200. Are you telling me, though, that in the new zoning code, the 21-day provision is in there?
Correct.
Okay, so let's say council agrees to change it back to the statutory period of 90 days. Is that something that we just inform you of, and you make the change, or do I have to go through the zoning code and wind it through and put the new language in?
It would, I believe we would, we can work with you on that, for sure, if that's the route that council wants to take.
Yeah, because it's a voluminous document, it would be much easier since you guys prepared it, just to say council agrees to change this provision, you put it in the final form and present it back to us for passage.
Yeah, I think we could certainly help you with the language.
Pam?
Yeah, I actually thought when we were discussing that, that the majority of us in the committee agreed that we preferred to stay with the statutory period, so, I don't know. I think it does make more sense for our city.
For which part makes more sense for our city?
The statute, the.
The regular?
Correct.
Okay.
And I thought that when we were meeting in the Z-21 committee, that we all thought that was preferable, so I'm not sure how we ended up with the 21, but.
Yeah, I did, I asked Andy that, kind of that question, too.
Oh, so you had the same perception.
Yeah, because I just didn't remember us coming to that conclusion, and I, but I also, you know, it's been six years, so, you know, he went, he actually went back to his notes and found that we had talked about it, I think, in 2021, so it has been a little while, but.
Been a while. I do remember the conversation and the discussion, though, and I think there was concern that 21 days was short, and I can see where it does work for a city that's larger, and maybe they have a lot of development going on, and it expedites things, I do understand that, but I thought our discussion was we wanted to stay with the 90.
Yeah, I think, it sounds like we, we like that idea.
Any other questions, Patrick?
Any other questions, Patrick?
No, thank you for that.
Jill, did you have one?
Thank you very much.
I just want to say, I concur with Pam. It was set up to expedite development. And I think Fort Wright is actually the first one that did the 21-day, didn't it?
Covington had it, too.
Covington as well. And it was just because they have a lot of development going on. And by the time you hit the 21-day period, the developer can start doing things, as opposed to two council meetings, and dragging that out. And the other thing, too, is when we do a MAP amendment at the zoning commission, there's forms in the back. We just had this last week, when we did this, people were going to the forms. We made it, we adjudicated something, and we disapproved. And it gets kind of complicated, because when you're disapproving something that somebody presents, then the public went out there, and they said, well, I don't agree with this, I'm gonna appeal it. But they, they didn't want it approved either, so you kind of got to explain it a little bit better. But those forms, and it just takes one person to sign a form, if you did stick with the 21-day, every time something came up, you could have these on hand, and just fill it out, and send it to the staff as well. So it's, it's good for expediting development, is what it's for.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And I think, yeah.
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Okay, I'll pop that in my case, because I've been writing ID to anybody else. So, yeah, if you want to talk now, it's, give me a couple minutes.
So my name is Dan Woody. I don't actually live in Park Hills. I actually live over in Anderson Township in Ohio. However, I've had some interfacing with Park Hills over the last couple of years. So I've actually been the victim of a targeted, biased, and unjustified criminal investigation by the Park Hills Police Department, which was determined by the county attorney to be without merit. The investigation was directly triggered by a legal open records request, which I submitted under the Kentucky Open Records Act, in which the department violated the law in refusing to fulfill. I have a decision from the Kentucky Attorney General, in which they found that the Park Hills Police Department violated the Kentucky Open Records Act in several different ways. I also currently have two additional Open Records Act appeals open with the Attorney General, also for public records that have been withheld. While Chief Stanley has been helpful and cooperative for the most part recently, he was directly involved in and supported the violation of the Kentucky Open Records Act, and the illegitimate investigation into crimes that I did not commit. Nobody should have to go through something like this, when all they're trying to do is exercise their rights under the law. Additionally, I recently found out that a former Park Hills officer intentionally destroyed public records during his departure from the department, which may be a criminal violation, possibly a felony under Kentucky, under Kentucky law. I would ask that Chief Stanley and the mayor explain to the public how much of their money and officer time that they paid for was spent on this illegitimate investigation that did not involve any residents of Park Hills, as well as why the former officer was allowed to testify in a civil case while collecting overtime pay, when he and the department had received no subpoena to do so. And, and I sent both Chief Stanley and Mayor Zembruck that last part, so they could prepare that information. And Mrs. Zembruck responded that she would not be ready to answer that. So...
No, I mean, you just send it, and then you send a request to be on, to talk on Saturday, and I have no knowledge of all that, so...
Okay. I think you owe the citizens of Park Hills an answer to that.
Well, if we have that, and when we have that, I think it's, is it a back-and-forth with the AG right now, so?
I don't know what the AG's gonna do. I'm preparing his last open records request, which is, well, actually, it's not very long, it's more, he's just stating his, his problems with everything. It's not really an open records request, completely. So, I mean, I'm giving what he's got, the open records request, I'm giving it to him tomorrow.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, Wednesday.
That's fine. So maybe you address it at the next meeting.
Well, I mean, I mean, I hope, I, there's nothing, I mean, this is something we've been dealing with for two, for several months now. You know, my opinion and the stance on it, I did deny your first open records request. You understood why. I'm not gonna bring that up. Attorney General ruled it out, was wrong. And it was quite, it was nice that I've made headlines for being smacked around by the Attorney General, but it was nice.
Yeah, they, what, four or five pages?
Yeah, it's always nice to be, have your name put out there. But as far as, listen, you have a problem with former Sergeant Dwayne. This is the officer he's talking about, who's no longer here.
Yep.
He discussed this on numerous occasions. So the thing he's talking about, as far as the investigation went, give my officers latitude to start an investigation that feels appropriate, which he did. He talked with me about it. I have to admit, I didn't quite, your story of how it all started is news, new to me. We had that conversation, we talked about it a couple times, you and I.
Yeah.
He did attempt to get charges filed against you, and I believe they were denied by the county attorney's office.
Correct.
So he did go to court, he testified in a civil hearing. I don't get a, I didn't get a subpoena for the civil hearing, because it's civil, it's not criminal. So I didn't know he was gonna testify. I knew he was gonna testify, because he told me, but I hadn't realized it was a civil hearing. I paid the two hours overtime, because he was going into capacity, but Park Hills Police still officered, and he felt it was important to testify in a civil hearing. So it was two hours overtime, I granted him.
Right. And it had absolutely nothing to do with the investigation that he testified about, so...
Well, okay, that's, that's, your opinion and his opinion are different, so...
But I don't think the citizens of Park Hills should have been paying him overtime to do that, when he, when he did not even receive a subpoena.
Again, he felt it was important to go to it, because he was investigating this case, and he felt it was important to go and represent the Park Hills Police Department. It was two hours overtime.
Again, I think, I think the citizens should get some answers, as far as why their money is being spent on things like this, when nobody involved lived in Park Hills.
Well, that's not true. She did live in Park Hills at a time with it.
At a time in the past, well before all of this started.
But she did live in Park Hills at one time, did she not?
At one time.
That's how we got involved, correct.
Yeah, it was more than six months before any of this started.
Nevertheless.
Yes.
What else did you have, did you want to talk about?
That was it. That's it. I, I just think, I think you guys owe them some answers on how much was spent, how much officer time, all that stuff. I think the citizens deserve to know that. Thank you.
Department reports. Chief Stanley?
Everybody had an opportunity to read my report, I hope.
You've noticed that we did get, you see that grant?
That's great.
We really need that ballistic shield. I don't know, hopefully not that we have it, in case we do. And kind of goes to hand hand together, things we've been getting recently. Any other questions?
I have a question unrelated to your report, may I ask it?
Sure.
Forgot. I received a call from a resident today who asked me to ask this of you. He is a walker. He's a daily walker. And he wanted to know if any speeding tickets have been given out of Cleveland. And I know I see you every day when I walk the dogs, so I know it's being patrolled. But he wanted to ask specifically, have any speeding tickets been given out, and is it being routinely patrolled? It is absent, Mr. Walker.
I don't know of any tickets. I don't remember seeing any tickets for Cleveland coming across my desk. But if we do patrol it, I don't know necessarily where. I'm returning to my officers, we're looking into it. I don't know whether they're gonna sit, or whether they're gonna do it, but that getting permission to sit in someone's driveway.
Well, if you need permission, I would be happy to ask people. I know there are people who would gladly volunteer that. I really think the biggest offenders that we see on Cleveland are through traffic, including Amazon, FedEx, and through traffic tomorrow.
Yeah. Let me know who will let us use the property, and I'll put it that way.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you.
I do know there's, there are an answering. It's on, it's been quite a deal. So all for Chief. Chief breaking?
Hopefully everybody got to see my report. Twenty-seven calls, service for the month of November. And we did have two structure fires in the city. We had numerous trainings that members attended this month, and we have all the fire hydrants prepared for winter ice, so just in time for the cold weather. But that's really all I have. If anybody has any questions.
I have a, I have a compliment to share with you, and then I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The resident at 1007 Rose Circle, he shared a compliment with me, and he said, "Chief Rigney has been amazing, and so helpful throughout the process, in making sure the right things happen, and we are protected." And I just wanted to let you know that he, you know, reached out to me and said that.
Appreciate it.
He shared that with me specifically. You know, having two structure fires is a really big deal, in such a short period of time. And, and this resident was also out of town at the time, and it was, it was really meaningful and important to him, that you were there to support him.
We're happy we could help. And I'm glad, I'm glad the mother-in-law showed up when she did. So...
Has there been any, any results from the investigations for this?
No. We've, both of the, both of the fires, they were having the floors redone, and we believe in some ways, that possibly could have been connected. But we're gonna leave that for the insurance companies to decide. There's nothing conclusive at this time, so that's all we got.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Dan?
Mayor Zembruck, members of council, thanks for another month, and thanks for the attaboy about the snow removal. It's like going to the Super Bowl without having the whole season to prepare, so I think we survived pretty well.
Well, I knew you were doing leaves, and then I thought you gotta switch over now for...
Yeah, yeah, we're getting ready to get back to the leaves, and have fun with that. So Mother Nature gave us a little taste of winter, more like a big taste, four inches of snow, easy. Well, I think we did pretty good in all that, blah, blah, blah. And thanks to the residents who moved their vehicles out of the way, that really helps out. And there's always that one, it just happens to be at the bad spot. You know, getting those out of the way is very helpful. As I mentioned, we switched back to the leaves to do the leaf pickup, for the ones that are paid up, and emphasis is on paid up, because we're getting pretty late in the season, and some people want to wait till the last minute, and we got snow to, I mean, we've already had the snow, so...
I think Friday might be some snow.
We're gearing up. We're going at it today. And then Christmas tree drop is at the same place this year, at Trolley Park. And the county will grind it up, and haul it off for us, as usual.
Dan, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Do you have a date of when the county, in case somebody asks, what's the last day to drop off? Or do they just keep coming until they don't see anything?
Well, if they drop trees off after the county picks them up, I just take them to the burn pile.
Okay.
I think it was January the 7th was, I wrote it down, forgot to pass it along, too.
I was thinking that was the first week.
Yeah. And anybody have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Regarding cars that aren't moved, has ever any thought to putting a note on their windshield, to say...
We just go around them.
I know, so that they would then be informed. Because I know our neighbor next, they just moved here from San Diego, so they don't, yes.
Well, tell them I said welcome to Park Hills.
And tell them to sign up for a reach alert, and then...
Yeah, in that case, I don't, I think the amount caught everybody by surprise.
Exactly.
You know? And I think the reach alert went out the next morning, and it already happened.
It was pretty late.
Yeah. I was stopped at State Bar and getting Brian, and I was like, dump truck after dump truck's going out of there with salt, and I was like, what the heck?
Yeah.
Next thing you know, it started coming down, and I was like, oh, here we go.
And we did sign up for all our salt, so we're...
Yes, ma'am.
It's on hold.
We're, we're well into that. I'll talk with them today about it, too.
Right.
Salt and rind, all the bulk's for 70 tons.
That's right. Thanks, Dan. Well, I have Jay's report. The bus stop, he did send a plan out to KYTC, but have not heard back, so that's the same answer as last week. But it usually takes a while for them to get that. And then the Gateway Development, we're still waiting on the punch list, which I think we're gonna do a new punch list, and just let them know, because we're, we have insurance on it, that we won't, you know, give up, or until they have a bond, so we know that this stuff will get done. It's just getting them to do it.
We've been talking about that. That same sentence has been in that lead report for a year, every single time I'm on council.
And it's right away that their engineers have to finish up, and, you know, they have to come back to us for that, so...
So it's just, yeah, it's just like a holding pattern, without any way to like...
Well, we keep bugging the heck out of them, but, yeah. And it's not really for us to pay for, or do ourselves. So we want their engineers to do it, because they're the property to do it, so...
And believe it or not, it's been there even longer than that.
Yeah, it is, yeah. But hopefully, before the new year, we'll hear back from KYTC on the bus stop, because...
It's an important project.
Yeah, it is. Financials?
I'll make a connection.
Oh, yeah.
One second.
Most of the tax money's in, pilots were due at the end of November, so it was pretty much come in. Kathy and I talked about, we, I did move the funds to pay off the money that we owed to the general fund out of the road fund. And I know the mayor names, it didn't show up in the reimbursed general fund expense.
I saw that, yeah.
What, and what Amanda, what I figured was, it was recorded as a liability and a due-to fund. So she set it up as a due-to and a due-from. So what it does is it offsets the liability in the road fund, and records it as an asset due to the general fund. So the balance reflects the transition. So what it did was, it took that line off there, where it says due-from. And we have that, like, with my road tax money. You don't see the due-to road tax in the general fund, because it's set up as a liability, as money due just somewhere else. So that's, that's why it's not shown there, but the balance does reflect it. And when you notice that that is going from the main page there, because it's, it's done, it's paid for, so it's taken care of. So that's the best way I can describe how she related it to me.
Right. I told her I understood it, but to explain it is hard, but, because when I budget it, it's in the expense part.
Right.
And so that's how it should, I wanted it to show, but she had it as a liability, and that's why the liability disappeared. But it's still, it still came out of the same fund, came out of the road fund. So the road fund is cleaned up, paid back to the general fund, so we're good with that.
I noticed that on page 10 of 10, and maybe this is what you're referring to, but I want to just make sure, this line, actually, the last line of our whole budget, the 899991 reimbursed general fund, for that 202,000.
Right.
That is that amount, but it doesn't show.
Well, it was 188, and some change.
It doesn't show.
Yeah. It doesn't show, that's, that's the expense page that I, the mother-in-law didn't show there. And she said, because she had it as a liability, and not an expense. And I said, I was hoping it would show right here, you know, that we paid back. What I budgeted was the 202, and what we paid back was, all that was owed was 188.7, something like that.
And if you notice, also, on the front page of the, your balance sheet...
For restricted.
On the restricted, where it says current liabilities, accounts payable, it used to have the same amount liable as it did on the general fund balance sheet as due-to. So those kind of offset, and they're both gone.
Yeah, I understand those things, but I guess it just, I'm sorry. But I'm, I'm just curious, like, it seems like we should be able to see this happening somewhere, and it doesn't look like it is. So...
Yeah.
So are we gonna try to correct that?
Well, I'll talk to her about if she can include it in the expense line to, to show it. I don't know, I'll, I'll find out. That's why I tried to find out, but I understood what she was getting back to me with, but I told her it's gonna be difficult to explain it. Pam?
I just wanted to clarify, for the benefit of Emily and Laura, and members of the audience who are listening, what we're talking about here, because it's pretty obscure when you just listen to the accounting language. But years ago, when the Lower Jackson Road project was done, which was a full-depth repair, and new sidewalks and everything, there were cost overruns. And those cost overruns resulted, were paid out of the general fund, resulted... And those cost overruns resulted, were paid, that was the general fund, resulting in an obligation from the road fund back to the general fund to repay those cost overruns. So, that has been accomplished. The accounting language, I agree, I'd like to see it, but it does show in the balances that the road fund has paid the general fund back $188,000.
Because you also don't see it on the general side as income.
That's correct.
And it did show up every month for everybody, in the form on that front sheet where we hit a liability, and we hit amount due, and since they're both gone.
We'll talk to her about it.
Yeah, it just seems. Because there's no way to put it in the general fund, there's no, it just goes back into the bank. It doesn't go into a line, so.
Yeah.
We'll talk to her about it, how to better show it. Because I, I had.
But the good news is it's done.
Yeah.
It looks cleaner-ish. We can figure that out. I, I did also have a couple of other questions that are also for the restricted accounts. And I, you know, because that one's gone, there, it seems like there are a couple of new items that I didn't notice before, so the, and they're pretty, well, one of them's pretty small, but the accounts payable, liability for $562.73.
Page.
Oh, I'm sorry, page eight of 10. And then also the due from other fund admin fund, that's in our assets, for $3,832.30. I just thought these were kind of unusual, and I didn't know what those were.
The accounts payable, and I can't remember what that was, I thought that'll come up, and I can't remember one.
Restricted?
Yeah, where it says accounts payable, 562.73.
Is that with the tree board?
No. No. Let me look, I'll email council, because I, I know what it is, but I can't think of it. It seems like I hit, I don't know.
It's, it's okay. I don't want, I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot, I'm just, you know, I just thought they could, and usually I send you an email.
Yeah, that's fine.
But just kind of an explanation would be helpful, maybe for both that 20, 20,000 accounts payable.
What was the other?
Yeah, and then the other one is the, it's the 31010, which is the $3,832.30 under other current assets on the same page, it's a little further up.
The due from other funds?
Correct.
I believe that is what's left in the, I guess they do kind of show the due to road fund. I'm guessing, I transfer the majority of the taxes collected for the road fund, and that's, I'm assuming some scribblers that came in during November that have not been transferred to the road fund from the due to road fund taxes.
Okay.
But I'll double check on that, too. I'm pretty sure that's what that is.
Okay.
Anybody else?
The only other question I had, in the last month, we talked about the tuck pointing bill, and I still didn't see that, and I, you know, didn't know where.
It was paid, and I moved it, I had inadvertently put it in parks, so that would have showed up there. I moved it to the 100th anniversary on the expense line, so next month, that 2,000 will show in that, in that line for the December.
Thank you.
Financials, because I moved it this month, I looked, and I was like, ooh. So, the parks will be levered to, and then that'll be levered to.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to roll call, Mr. Claypool?
Yes.
Ms. Sayers?
Yes.
Ms. Frey?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Curtis?
Yes. Mr. Elgin?
Yes.
And Mr. Bray, didn't have any other reports for the code enforcement? And I did get a note from ST1, Park Hills Sewer Maintenance, they call it cured in place, and that's from Hill, on Hillcrest and Amsterdam, there's some storm maintenance, and the cured in place is where they line the sewer, instead of digging it up and replacing it, they're relining the sewer. So, St. James, Amsterdam, and Hillcrest, and Partis Lebe Hall are being done. So, that's on our list. And they have all the other cities here, but they sent me what they're doing here, so. So, if you see ST1 out, that's what they're relining sewers.
Can you maybe share that on the website, like on the, on the blog page or something? Just so folks know.
I think our Facebook page, too. Maybe that's how people get information.
Mm-hmm. Your base.
Any committees?
Well, we had Economic Development and Business Committee, we had our end-of-year social, and, you know, I thought it was well-attended, it was better, more attendance than last year, and we didn't have snow that night. And so, I want to thank everybody who came, and I think it was, it was a really fun, enjoyable evening, and we awarded Park Hills Animal Hospital the award this year for being the longest-standing business in Park Hills, in case you were wondering. 1946 is when they were established, and, is that right? Was that the right year?
I think so.
And, you know, Fort Mitchell Garage is only a year younger, 1947.
Yeah, 47.
Yeah. I think Dr. Barton was really, really touched.
Doctor, yeah, doc.
Oh, not Dr. Barton, he was the first one.
He was, yeah. Dr. Collett, he was very.
He was very touched.
Barton, Barton, then, yeah.
Yeah.
It was a nice meeting. It was a nice meeting.
And he actually told a little story about having an ape in his, in there, in, in his office, well, it wasn't his office, it was the doctor before him, and everybody was entertained by it.
Picture of playing Chappers or something with a little boy. It used to hang in the lobby, there's a picture of the ape.
Really?
Sitting with a little boy, and it's like, that was terrifying.
Okay.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Any other committees?
You know, Dr. Bernard was the very first one up there. He was the, he was strange, but.
I forgot the name of this.
I'm sorry. He has trained animals up there.
It was a chimp.
He did. Is it okay if I say something?
Jim.
My grandmother lived at 711 St. Joseph Lane, so she was like two houses up and right across the street. But Dr. Bernard was really respected by all the neighbors. I remember once my cousin fell, and he needed stitches in his hand, and my, my grandmother didn't have a car, she didn't drive. A lot of women were in that position, and they went to Dr. Bernard, and he just did the stitches, no problem.
Wow.
He was, he was very kind to you, so.
You probably said it.
Well, that's a good one. Any other committees?
We did not have a park committee meeting this month, but Missy and I did take advantage of the weather yesterday to try and get a lot done in the park in preparation for Luminaria Night. It's so cold, the things are.
It's going to be really cold.
Pretty frozen. And we did have, unfortunately, a irrigation system flaw that cost a lot of money. I was going to defer that until spring, until I found out, they said they couldn't blow the system out until we made the repair. It was a backflow valve preventer, backflow preventer valve had gone bad. So, we had it done, actually, just the day before the snow, so it was fortunate all that system was blown out, and that was accomplished.
That's great. That's good. It's going to be cold this weekend for Luminaria Night.
It is.
Yeah. Especially this weekend. Any old business? New business?
Laura?
Did you want to talk about the possibility of having meetings at Company and Catholic?
Well, I did reach out, and they were off today, so I'm waiting to hear back, but, yeah, we'll talk about it. Because there's a lot more to just, yeah, just having another place, it's the, being there an hour earlier and having it available all the time, those are things. Because we've met, and, and the whole time I've been on council and mayor, it's been, there's been a church we've met at, there's a cafeteria at Cufcath, and a smaller room at Cufcath, an auditorium, and it was at the Gardens, and then up to Notre Dame, and then back to the Gardens, and then back to Notre Dame, because they have, when they had events or a funeral and things, we'd always get pushed back out of there, so we were all over the map. And then back to the Gardens, and after the COVID, we became acceptable to stream for our meetings, so that brought us back here. And the goal was to that, the building we have for the police department, we thought about meeting there, but since the police wasn't there, and Edward Jones lease isn't up yet, once it's up in about three years, I would like to move administration to that, and then open up the downstairs. Chief Rigney and I went through the square footage of it, and it would hold 70 people. And it's on the first floor, and it would be very accommodating.
Until that time, though, I think that it's a perfect venue for us.
Right. But that, that's why I want to dig more into it and see.
I mean, Mr. Hanson.
How many times are they going to throw us out, and how many times?
He assured me that, you know, we would be a standing, you know, standing appointment for them. And the students would set up the venue for us with their tables and chairs, council, and then the audience would have all the chairs right there. The acoustics are really good, and he would give us a key code to get in. I think I emailed all the council members about this, and it just seems like the perfect solution, and so we can then get into the downstairs.
I agree. I think that's a great idea.
Okay, I'll report back on that after I talk to them, and we'll bring it back to council. Well, I haven't heard anything further.
So, we've been.
Thank you very much. Have a good Christmas.